My faith and have a more stronger relationship with God. As we begin this meeting, I would like to invite Vijay Uncle to lead us in prayer.
Hallelujah, hallelujah. We praise you Lord. Let us submit ourselves in the presence of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Thank you, Jesus. Praise you Lord, praise you Lord. Heavenly Father, thank you Lord. Thank you for this beautiful morning, oh Lord Jesus. Thank you for giving us one more opportunity to gather together, oh Lord Jesus. Thank you for our youth, oh Lord Jesus. We are bringing our youth in your presence, oh Lord Jesus. Bless each and everyone, oh Lord Jesus. Thank you for your presence in our midst, oh Lord Jesus. Thank you for everything you have done in our life, oh Lord Jesus. Oh Lord Jesus, praying for Pastor Rufus, oh Lord Jesus, he is leading the session, oh Lord Jesus. Be with them, anoint them, oh Lord Jesus, and speak through him, oh Lord Jesus. And praying for all the members, all the leadership or worship team, and all the leadership and all the attendees, oh Lord Jesus. Bless each and everyone. Give us a blessed service in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. We pray, amen.
Praise the Lord. As Matthew 5:14 to 16 says, "You are the lights of the world; let your light shine before others, that they may see your good deeds and glorify your Father in heaven." On behalf of Rehoboth Pentecostal Church of Delaware Valley, I would like to cordially invite each and everyone present here today, all the church members, guests, and our esteemed speaker Pastor Rufus George and his family. Pastor Rufus is a lead pastor of Philadelphia Indian Christian Assembly in northeast. He's been mightily used for the glory of the Lord among the youths in the Philadelphia region, boldly proclaiming the word of God in this present age of diluting Christian faith. May God continue to bless him and his family and use them more for the kingdom of the Lord. Last but not the least, to all the youths gathered here today, thank you for coming and participating in this conference. I'm sure God will bless each one of us and use Pastor to share his message to us. The theme which we chose today stands so much relevant to our present situation, living a Christ-centered life. In this present age of social media and in artificial intelligence, we are exposed so much daily to new information, where we can find our focus on the Lord and center it on the author and finisher of our faith, Lord Jesus Christ. That is why we have such conferences, to hear the word of God and have continuous fellowship with our Lord. We have this meeting divided into two sessions, and after each session we will have a question and answer round, where we can ask questions and clarify doubts with Pastor. The first session will end, and we will have a lunch break. The second session will be followed by the lunch break, which will be ending, and we have snacks and coffees prepared for everybody. Once again, I give a hearty welcome to each and everyone present here. God bless us all. We will be having the worship session now. I kindly request everyone to stand in worship. Revelation says in 5:13, "That every creature will praise him who sits on the throne and the lamb for eternity." If there is anyone who's worthy of all our praise and honor, we know that is our Lord Jesus. If you ask me, why is he worthy? He is worthy because he shed every drop of blood in his body for us. We know that if anyone does a favor for us, we are so thankful for them. But can we ever, ever, ever be thankful enough for what Christ did on the cross for us? He is worthy of all our praise, all our honor, and all glory belongs to him and him alone. Let us, when we worship and sing this song, let us keep that in mind, that every creature bows and kneels before him and worships him, because he is alone worthy of all our praise.
We praise you Lord. Hallelujah, hallelujah.
We have so much to be thankful for, food on the table, the house we live in, the family and friends we have. And all we have to thank for this is the Lord our God. And all the ask of us is that we are able to worship name, even in our toughest circumstances.
Shout Jesus from the mountain, Jesus in the stream. Jesus in the darkness, over every enemy. Jesus for my family, I speak the holy name, oh Jesus.
We praise you.
Shout Jesus from the mountain, Jesus in the stream. Jesus in the darkness, over every enemy. Jesus for my family, I speak the holy name, oh Jesus.
Shout Jesus.
Shout Jesus from the mountain, Jesus in the stream. Jesus in the darkness, over every enemy. Jesus for my family, I speak the holy name, oh Jesus. Your name is power, your name is healing, your name is life. Break every stronghold, shine through the shadows, burn like a fire. Your name is power, your name is healing, your name is life. Break every stronghold, shine through the shadows, burn like a fire. Your name is power, your name is healing, your name is life. Break every stronghold, shine through the shadows, burn like a fire. Your name is power, your name is healing, your name is life. Break every stronghold, shine through the shadows, burn like a fire.
Can we all say the name of Jesus once again in our lives? Hallelujah.
I just want to speak the name of Jesus. Over every heart and every mind. Cause I know there is peace within your presence. I speak Jesus.
We believe in you, Lord Jesus.
And I just want to speak the name of Jesus. Over every heart and every mind. Cause I know there is peace within your presence. I speak Jesus.
This morning, hallelujah, let us all submit ourselves. And surrender to that mighty God and say, "Lord Jesus, we speak your name over every dark situations of our life." Hallelujah. How many of you believe that there is power in the mighty name of our Lord Jesus Christ? Hallelujah. Anyone who called out the name of Lord Jesus Christ, Lord Jesus has answered them. We all know that when a man named Barthimaeus, he called out the name of Jesus Christ, "Son of David, have mercy upon me", though none of them, though there was a big crowd around Jesus Christ and none of them heard Barthimaeus calling out the name of Jesus, but Lord Jesus heard his voice. And though he was shouting on top of his lung, people were telling him to be quiet. When people try to suppress your voice, Lord Jesus Christ is still there who hears your voice. Hallelujah. Can we all surrender ourselves in the presence of God and say, "Lord Jesus, we need you, Lord. Every day of our life, Lord God, we need you, Father. We praise you, Jesus. Lord, you're worthy of all praise and honor, oh God. Hallelujah. Can we all submit ourselves in the presence of God and say, "Lord, we need you, Jesus. Every day in our life, God, we need you, Father. And because you live, we do not have to face, we do not have to worry about tomorrow, oh God. We thank you, Lord Jesus. Thank you for this time, oh God. We believe in you, Lord Jesus. Let us just submit ourselves in the presence of God and say, "Lord, we believe in you, Lord Jesus." Hallelujah. Because he lives, I can face tomorrow. Because he lives, all fear is gone. Because I know he holds my future. And life is worth the living just because he lives. Do you believe that in this morning? Because he lives, I can face tomorrow. Because he lives, all fear is gone. Because I know he holds my future. And life is worth the living just because he lives. God, thank you, son.
They call him Jesus. He came through love. He lamb for him. He lived and died to find my pardon. An empty grave is said of him, my savior and. Because he lives, I can face tomorrow. Because he lives, all fear is gone. Because I know he holds the future. And life is worth the living just because he lives.
Because he lives.
Because he lives, I can face tomorrow. Because he lives, all fear is gone. Because I know he holds the future. And life is worth the living just because he lives. I can face tomorrow. Because he lives, all fear is gone. Because I know he holds the future. And life is worth the living just because he lives.
Because he lives.
I can face tomorrow. Because he lives, all fear is gone. Because I know he holds the future. And life is worth the living just because he lives.
Hallelujah. Oh, we praise you, Lord Jesus. Hallelujah. You're worthy, Lord. Hallelujah. You're worthy, Lord Jesus. We praise you, God. We praise you, Lord Jesus. Oh, we praise you, Lord Jesus. Hallelujah. Now, when there was no one near to Hager, the person whom she depended upon, that person left her and asked her to go to the wilderness. She and her child, when they were about to die, there was no opening, there was no source, there was no help. In the time of their desperate need, there was no one who was near to them. Hallelujah. But Lord God says that because he lives, because he lives, I shall not face anything wrong. Hallelujah. Because he lives, I can face my tomorrow. Hallelujah. Hager faced her tomorrow because God is living. Hallelujah. He's the one who takes care of every aspects of our life. He takes care of every aspects of our life, and hence we do not have to worry about anything in our lives. Hallelujah. How many of you believe that there is nothing which we need to fear in Lord Jesus Christ is in our life. Hallelujah. One more time, let us sing this and praise the mighty name of Lord Jesus Christ. Because he lives.
I can face tomorrow. Because he lives, all fear is gone. Because I know he holds the future. And life is worth the living just because he lives.
Because he lives.
Because he lives. I can face tomorrow. Because he lives, all fear is gone. Because I know he holds the future. And life is worth the living just because he lives.
Oh Jesus, the life is worth of living because we know that you are in our life, oh Lord Jesus. No matter how advanced the technology becomes, Lord, no matter how advanced the artificial intelligence brings and takes this world, oh Father God, but we know, Lord Almighty God, that you are the true living Godfather, and everything is in your control, God. We surrender everything in your mighty hands. This morning, we pray that your Holy Spirit will speak to us through your servant, Lord Pastor Rufus. We pray, Jesus God, you speak to us tangibly, Lord, through your spirit, we pray, oh God. Use your servant, Lord, in a mighty way in our midst, we pray, oh Lord Jesus. Thank you once again, Father God, for your presence is there in midst of us, as your word says, wherever two or more are there in your name, your presence is there in midst of them. We thank and praise you for your promise, and we give you all the glory and all praises to you once again. Thank you for everything, Jesus. In the mighty name of Jesus Christ, we pray, amen. Hallelujah. As we see it.
I would now like to invite Pastor Rufus to share the message with us. Thank you.
Praise God. Hallelujah, hallelujah. How many of you are happy this morning that God has given you another day to praise the name of the Lord Almighty? You know, this morning when I was like... thank you. Praise God. Thank God for this wonderful time that he has given to us this morning to be here in the presence of the Lord. And what a joyful moment to be here, you know, this morning that God has given us. How many of you think that everything that happens in the life of a people of God might be kind of surprised for us, but it is already planned and well-planned in the presence of the Lord? You know, one time when the word of God, this morning when the word of God is, God has given to me, I've been preparing for this particular meeting for for a couple of days. And was being in the presence of the Lord. As I got the topic like being a follower of Christ on this new generation or this particular generation where this entire AI and all these things are very relevant. But very Is there making any sound here? It does, right? Okay, okay, then it's fine. I was like, amen. You know, there was a there is a why I'm really concerned about this thing. One time when I went to preach the word of God in one of the village back in India. So they gave me a pulpit. And I was, I was standing there. You know, I'm a person who always jumps and run around and preach all of, all of those things. You know, what happened? It was back in a village. And as I was walking on the stage, I started going down the stage and preaching the word of God. So these people, they have, they had a very, you know, to make the stage look bigger, you know, what they did is like, they, they arranged the table. Couple of tables were together, you know, back in India, how do they set the stage? But, you know, it's a North Indian people. And to look the stage bigger, you know, what did they do is like, towards the end, there was one table which they left a space in between. And they just covered the whole thing with a green, what do we say? Carpet? And they, they kept some flower vases and all those things, you know, Gujarati people, I don't know how many of you know that Gujarati people, they love to decorate the things. And I was walking and jumping around the stage, I was preaching the word of God. I didn't know that there's nothing underneath that green carpet. I just went and stepped into it. The next thing, I, I saw myself on the floor. So that's why whenever I hear some sounds, I just make sure that there's nothing going wrong with it. But, you know, not to make any mistake from myself, myself. So praise God for this wonderful time, and I'm very, very happy that God has brought us into the presence of the Lord this morning. And I just want to, you know, turn the entire lights off. Still, 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 I know that the lights will come up. I just want to show you something. I want to demonstrate something to you. To, yeah, if it is possible, turn every, every light off, if it is possible. Just the lights, lights. But I think still, still, we will have the light, right? Now, you all have the phone, right? You all have the phone. Can you all please take the phone out? This is not gonna be that effective as I was thinking. As because we can still have the light in here. Can you all take the lights on? Do me a favor. And turn the torch on in the light. Turn the torch on in the light. All right? Okay. As I told you, it is not gonna be that effective as we were, as I was thinking about this particular demonstration. Okay, can you, can you, can you all lift the thing on? All right. Now, look at each other. Look at each other. And see that does that light light reflect on other person's face or not? Yes or no? A little bit. It's, it's, it's because we still have the light in here. Right? Does the small light reflect other person's face? Yes or no? So what does that mean? Doesn't matter how many people are here. The matter is, are you ready to reflect yourself? Right? Doesn't matter how many people are here and how, what is the gathering, what is the number? The matter is, are you ready to be a light of the Lord? You know? When every, every time, you know, when, wherever God sends, I always say is that, God, I don't want to go anywhere and preach the word of God. Because if I go, then I will try to preach something from my side. But when God sends, I believe whatever will be coming out of the mouth will be completely anointed by the Holy Spirit and controlled by the Holy Spirit. Amen? So if you are concerned about anything this morning, let me give you a word of faith. You know, the church that I've been ministering for the last three years, as most of you might know about that church, which is one of the oldest church in Philadelphia. And one of, it was one of the largest church in Philadelphia or this North region. You know what happened? When they invited me to serve the Lord there for the first time, I prepared a message from the book of Thessalonians. And as I prepared the message, my preparation was completely about how a church can be built. Because I, they did not invited me to be a pastor of the church or to minister with them. They invited me as a guest pastor to preach the word of God to the congregation on that particular Sunday. And you know what? As I was preparing the word of God, I prepared from the book of Thessalonians. And as I prepared from the book of Thessalonians, I made the whole sermon, you know, the whole big sermon. And after, at the end of the story, you know, what happened, I got into my car from New York. From the time I was, I started driving the car, the word of God that was coming to my head back and back, back and forth, that was the book of Nehemiah. I was like, God, why do you want me to preach? Why are you bringing this thought into my head about the book of Nehemiah? You know what happened? I went there. I drove the car all the way there to the Philadelphia from New York. It's like almost two, two and a half hour drive. When I went to the parking lot, I reached there first. You know, and you know what happened? When I saw the parking lot, I was like, the, the, the word that God was giving to my head about book of Nehemiah is something contradictory because it is not matching up the whole thing. Then pastor came, I got into the church. I went and sat in the sanctuary. I don't know how many of you have seen our church sanctuary. You know? And when I saw the sanctuary, I was like, oh, my goodness. It is one of the biggest church I have ever visited in states. Such a, such a, such a spacious place, such a beautiful facility. And I was so excited to preach the word of God there. You know what happened? While I was sitting there, I don't have a habit of looking, turn back and look back, how many people are there? You know, what's the number? I don't, I don't like to do that. But that time, that day, I did something disrespectful to the people of God who are serving the Lord, who are singing the songs, who are worshiping the Lord, leading the song. I know that it was completely a disrespectful act. You know what was that? I start, I, I was keep on reading the book of Nehemiah. Actually, I was not about to preach. I was not about to say this thing in here, in this church at this morning. You know, my, my topic is growing in the knowledge of, right, Jesus Christ in this enduring time. But I don't know why God has brought, brought this thought into my head. You know, as, as I was reading the book of Nehemiah, the Holy Spirit start giving me the word to preach from that particular scripture. As I was preparing in my head, I wasn't writing down or taking any note. I was preparing in my head and I was praying to the Lord, God, I need your presence. I need the Holy Spirit to speak to me. And while I was sitting there, the Holy Spirit clearly told me, I have brought you here to rebuild this place. At that, at that moment, I don't have any idea that I will be a pastor of the church. You know, I was like very young. You know? And I know that being a young person, it is not that easy to be a pastor of a church. And I was not with my family. My family was in India back then. You know what happened? All of a sudden, this word of God starts striking back. The only word that God gave me, "Are you ready to cry?" That was the word that God gave me. "Are you ready to cry?" I was like, what kind of word is this? What kind of prophecy is this? Do you want to, do you want me to cry? But being a servant of the Lord and being a person who just blindly believes in whatever he says, just accept it. You know, what did I do? I just accepted the prophecy of God. And you know what was the prophecy? "Are you ready to?" But when I was looking at the facility, when I was looking at entire things, it was in my head, I was like, I should, I don't have anything to cry here. But the Holy Spirit said, "Are you ready to cry?" You know what happened? That day, I took a decision, "God, I'm ready to cry. I need your presence. I need you, Lord Father." You know what happened? Later on, I've been, I've been, I've been, you know, I will definitely make the lights on. Don't worry about it, okay? If you're thinking that I'm going to make you sit in the dark now. You know, I just want to, I just want to make something, bring a idea to, into your head why we are here in this morning. While I was praying, all of a sudden, the Holy Spirit told me, "Are you ready to do this thing? Take up the charge and get onto the presence of the Lord." And all glory and honor to God. When I turned back from the pulpit to the congregation, I was like, God, I can see barely people on the pews sitting here and there. You know? I wasn't able to witness any young people on that Sunday. I prayed. I went back. I said, "God, I need your grace. I need you, Father." Slowly, I've been invited back and forth. I came back to the church. You know, slowly, the church has appointed me as a pastor over there. And the only thing I prayed to the Lord, I need young bunch of people, Lord, to serve you, to be with you, Father. You know? Now, today, you know, out of them, I have like, how many people are here? Seventeen? Seventeen? Seventeen of them are here this morning. You know, I told them I'm going to Delaware for a one-day camp in Upper Daby, Delaware. Even I didn't know that Delaware is like another another county. So they all, they came. And today, this morning, they all are here with the, by the grace of God. What I'm trying to say, now, can you all take your phone one more time? Can you all take your phone one more time? All right, take your phone. Flash up. Turn the, turn, 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 turn the flash on. All right? Now, can you all please raise your phone? Okay. Now, try to put this thing on the person who is sitting next to you. Right? All right? So now, let me ask you one question. When you are ready to turn the flash on of your phone and look at somebody else's face, when you are making some effort, you are seeing that person's face clearly, yes or no? Yes or no? Now, you all can turn the phone off and turn the lights on. I just want to give you one more demonstration. And from there, we will be going into the word of God this morning. How many of you wear the watch? How many of you wear the watch? How many of you have watch in your hand? All right? That's so the people don't wear the watch? Okay. Usually, where you keep your phone? Which pocket you keep your phone? Huh? Okay, then I want everybody to stand. You know, it's a, it's a one-day camp. Those who have phone, all right? Those who have phone, where you keep your phone, usually? All right, those who keep the phone on your right pocket, usually, take that phone, put it in your left pocket. Put it in your left pocket. That's your left? Okay. All right. Those who have wore the watch this morning, which, which hand you wearing the watch? Right? Okay, those who wear the watch on the right hand, wear that watch on the left hand. And those who are wearing the watch on the left hand, wear that watch on the right hand. Okay? All right? So you have done everything opposite that you usually do, right? Yes or no? Okay. Now, let me ask the people who are, who are wearing the watch on the right hand, you know, opposite hand, do you feel any kind of weight change in your hand? Different, right? Yes or no? But my question is, did we change the watch? It's the same watch that you wore on the other hand, right? Yes or no? It's nothing changed. It is the same watch, same weight, same brand, same body. But why do you feel the difference? Now, the people who, who you usually keep your phone on the left pocket, now you have the phone on the which pocket? Right pocket. How many of you, all the boys, how many of you have the wallet? Do you have the wallet? Where you keep the wallet? Left. Put it on the opposite side. And make sure, all the women, that, that you always do something. When you change your daily routine, daily thing, or your comfort thing, when you change that, do you feel any kind of heaviness? Yes or no? Right now, it's a very simple example. I, I, I told you. Move the watch from right, left hand to the right hand, or right hand to the left hand. And now you feel that is heavy. Right? Is it heavy? My question is, is this thing is heavy? It is not. It is the head which is telling you that is heavy. So what happens when you and I, we come to the presence of the Lord? Now, you all can sit in the presence of the Lord. You know, I might be just making you stand up and sit back, back and forth. Don't worry about it. Just, just keep the watch on the which hand. I know that it will make you discomfort for sure. The people who have the phone on the other, other, you know, opposite place, you will be really discomfort. You know why? You are not used to it. But when you come, when you are in the presence of the Lord, as you, as you and I, we were well aware about what is the topic? Being a Christ, being a follower of Christ in this present world, in a secular world, it is not easy to leave. When you put yourself in a place where you don't belong to, it will make you discomfort. Yes or no? This is a small example that I just took it. When you are not able to tolerate the same thing that you were carrying with you throughout your life, or at least for last one month, or at least for last many days, when you change the place of that thing from your life, you kind of like, oh, I cannot bear this anymore. I guarantee you, in another ten to fifteen minutes, you all will come back to the same spot. You know why? Because that is making you discomfort and you want to come back to the comfort zone. Right? Now, let me just put this way. This is exactly what a Christian life is. Christian life does not teach you to be in a comfort zone. It will take you out of your comfort and put you in a spot where you will be really aware about it. Now, every message, you know, you might be getting of text phone, phone messages, you might be, you, you want to, you want to look at the time, you want to do everything, but let me tell you one thing. Every message now you will be doing is knowingly. You will give more pressure to your brain. You will give more attention to whatever you are doing. That is what this world is teaching us, the word of God is teaching us. So shall we all close our eyes? We are going to pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful time that you have given to us, Lord Jesus. As we are here in the presence of the Lord to learn about how we can be a follower of Christ in this, on this life, Lord Jesus. We need your presence, Lord Father. We need you to guide us, Lord Jesus. As we are, as young people, we are here in the presence of the Lord, we need you to speak to us, to guide us, to let us know where we are heading in our life. All glory and honor to you. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen, amen, amen. Shall we all take attention to 2 Peter, chapter three, verses eighteen? 2 Peter, chapter three, verses eighteen. Yep. Yep. Amen. What it means to grow in the knowledge of Jesus. So this morning, we will be going and learning about, if you are taking notes of all the things, you can take a notes of this thing, this is not a preaching, preaching, this is kind of a camp where we will be discussing, you can ask me the questions at the end, and I will be giving an open time for that too. You know, what it means to grow in the knowledge of Jesus. To live on this earth, at this secular world, the number one thing that you need to understand, we need to grow in grace and knowledge of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen? I don't know how many of you know about some situations? You know, uh, let me just start with a, a story that I had back in my house. You know, we just moved from an old house to a new house, like a month ago, right? A month. And we had a dining chair, you know? And, and this dining chair, you know, all the, all, all, all the church member, they love me, and they, they take care of me very well. So what happened? We moved all the dining chairs and everything to the new house. So one uncle and auntie, they care for us, and they figured that one of, you know, all these dining chairs, the cushions is not good anymore. You know, why I'm telling this, this story? Because I know the people who have suffered because of that, they are here too. You know? You know what happened? All these chairs, you know, you know, it was not in a proper condition. So one uncle, what he did, what he did, he took some nails and a piece of plywood, and he placed under the wood, under the chair. And what happened? And the day, that evening, when I, when I went to the new house, this uncle was like, Pastor, Auntie is like, Pastor, can you just sit? I sat on the chair, it was good. I did not understand what, what's, what's new with it. So he's, she's like, are you okay? I said, I'm perfectly okay, the chair is good. Then she is like, don't you feel that we fixed the chair? I said, oh, yeah, 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 now I figured that you fixed the chair. That is when I actually realized. You know what happened? Slowly, that day is gone. That guy on the corner with the green T-shirt, his name is Ethan Matthew, he came to me, he is like, hey Pastor, you know what? I think there is something is hurting, something just poked me on my leg, and it started to bleed. I was like, what is poking on the thing? There is nothing to poke on the dining table. We just left it right there. Next day, I went in and sat, and I was just kind of stretching myself. I felt like something is poking me when I'm sitting. I was like, what's wrong with this thing? Another day, when my wife sat, she felt the same thing. And it is not just one chair. We had like all six chair, all six chairs had the same poking situation. You know? Just imagine. And we had a guest from Delhi, and these guests, we, we, we arranged the meal for them. So even then, we were not figuring it out what is right and what is happening. You know what happened? These guests came, we asked them to, hey, you can sit here and eat. That uncle, he sat, all of a sudden, he sat, something poked on us back. And all of a sudden, he just stood up, he did not tell me anything. You know? He just went and sat on the couch, and he just ate. That is when we realized, all these chairs have what? Have what? Nails under, under it. You know, what happened? Then we took that thing off, and we were discussing about this thing. We were talking about this thing, about this nail situation. And you know what happened that evening? I got a message from one of my uncle on Instagram. And the Instagram message, I don't want to play that Instagram message here. If you want to see that Instagram message, I can show you, you know, later on. It was some kind of a movie clip from Malayalam movie that talks about this ani, you know, this, this, this nail situation. And none of us knew, how did Instagram knew that nail situation is happening in Pastor Rufus's house? Are you getting me? Nobody knew. And we all were like, figuring it out. The same day, the same time, Instagram is showing us the videos, what? We were talking about. You know what I'm trying to tell you? When you speak, when you talk about something, you know, what does your phone do? It listens. It listens. And when it listens, you know, what does it do? It sends you the same message, same reels, that you would be interested. Right? I don't know how many of you get the Bible verse every morning on Instagram? Do you guys get it? No, right? I don't know how many of you get the, 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 the verses? No? Every message, everything that we post, or we talk, every message or every post that we talk, who is catching it? Most of the people think the AI is the best feature that we can ever. But let me tell you, the people who belongs to the IT, I can tell, I can guarantee you, is the worst, worst thing that you can ever have. You are in a secular world. The world is making so much easy for you, but that's the worst thing. Because every single topic that you speak, it is reflecting on your cellphone. Before, you know, sometimes we post the thing just for fun, right? That fun can turn out to be a big issue in your life. So let me tell. When we are growing in Christ, we have to understand the small device that you have in your hand is also listening to whatever you are speaking. So let us come back to the Word of God. The development of eight graces that we will be understanding from 1 Peter, chapter one, verses five to seven. 1 Peter, chapter one, I want everybody to take the Word of God with you and understand how we are growing in the knowledge of Christ Jesus. Number one, you know, these graces are listed, sorry, 2 Peter, chapter one, verses five to seven. All this seven things, eight graces are listed in this particular Word of God. And I want somebody to take the word with me, and I want somebody to read the, read the words loud for me, if it is possible. 2 Peter, chapter one, verses five, five to six. Yep. Amen. There are eight graces that are listed in this particular two, three verses, and number one is faith. Right? Number one, what is the first grace? Is faith. Amen? Faith is a conviction and strong assurance that God has given to the people of God. Amen? Let me tell, most of the people, they take grace as a gift of God. Grace is not just what you believe or what you receive as a blessing. Grace is also the faith that he has given to you. The, the, the meaning for that would be the conviction and a strong assurance. Amen? Yesterday night, we had a meeting in a PFG Church in Philadelphia. The man of God Pastor Andrew, he spoke. You know, what is the toughest part of a believer, toughest thing to a child of God to do in the church? Do you know what is that? And the toughest part is to confess. It is the toughest thing for a child of God to do it. Because we already confessed everything, and God has already redeemed us, and he has, he cleanses, he, he saved us, no. What if I tell, you know, one by one, you know, at the, at the end, at the end, I just want to make a small group session for that. You know, we will be, we will be dividing into two or three groups, and I will ask you, confess one mistake that you do. You know, I know most of the people will be like, oh, I lied. Ayayo. No, I watched movie, no. You know, there are way more sins that we do, right? Yes or no? But we don't have the guts to confess about it. The Word of God clearly tells, tells us the, number one grace is the faith or the conviction that you and I have in presence of the Lord. Number two, the virtue is a moral excellence and goodness. All right? What is the second grace? Is the virtue of moral excellence and goodness. Number three is knowledge or correct insight. What is knowledge? You know, like a virtue, let me just put the, explain that word. What do you mean by virtue? Moral? Excellence, what you see. Are you sure that this is what is right? Most of the time, as a people of God, we try to quote the grace of God with something very silly. We try to just make it up. But the actual grace of the Lord, he says that the virtue is a moral excellence and goodness that you have, you are carrying in your life. The third point that I would be just mentioning is knowledge. What do you mean by knowledge? What do you mean by knowledge? What do you mean by knowledge? I want, I want you to respond. What is the meaning of knowledge? Huh? Things what we know? Okay. Wisdom? Somebody said wisdom? Anything else? Okay. When the Word of God is saying that you and I, we need to grow in the knowledge of Jesus Christ, what do you, what do you understand from that particular concept? Knowledge of Jesus Christ. Knowledge of Jesus Christ means correct insight. How many of us has the correct insight? Amen? Because we only heard about a God who only loves us. Right? But there is a God who also put his wrath on you. Amen? You know, I have, I have, I have five kids, and two of them are here. And one is on the way, so my wife is pregnant. So the thing is, what I said, I, most of the time, I have a son. And whenever I'm yelling at him, does that mean that I hate him? Does that mean that I hate him? No. When I scold my son, it does not mean that I don't love him. It means that I love him more and more. It means that he is special to me. It means that he is very much important to me. That is why I'm yelling at him. Let me tell you, when you have the correct insight about the Lord Jesus Christ, you will be able to grow in Christ. Amen? Let me tell you, Makla, if Lord Jesus is telling you that this is not right in your life, if the Word of God is correcting you, if the Word of God is saying that what you are having in the presence of the Lord is not right, that does not mean that he does not love you, he loves you more. That is why he is giving you that commandment. Amen? Unfortunately, what happened, most of the parents these days, you know what the parents does? We gave them the good education. We gave them the great education on their secular life. We tried to pay the loan. You know, the, the, the biggest problem of Manali parents is, I consider, they don't let the child to take the responsibility. Most of the parents, they try to take over burden. They try to pay the fee. They try to do everything, but they don't let their child to understand what exactly they have to go through. At the end of the day, you know what happened? Once everything is done, when the child is about to leave the house, when the child answers you back, then you will be like, I paid your fees, I did everything. It hurts you, you are actually creating a big place for yourself to be hurted. Amen? You know, I always says that, until and unless you don't have the correct insight about the Lord Jesus Christ, you won't be able to love him. You won't be able to love him. Now, let me ask you, what is your correct insight about Lord Jesus Christ? You know, I gave a small, a brief, a brief description about the correct insight. Now, I will be asking questions to you. You know, I'm not gonna spare even the uncles and aunties, I'm gonna ask you too. All right? What do you mean by correct insight? What is the correct insight that you have about Lord Jesus Christ? I want to ask you. What's your name? Irene. Okay, what is your correct insight about Lord Jesus Christ? You can just answer anything, don't worry, I was a, I was, I was the dumbest kid in my class. All right? Huh? Repeat the question, okay. What is your correct insight about Lord Jesus Christ? That he loves us, okay. Uh, okay, let me ask my wife. What is your correct insight about the Lord Jesus Christ? Don't, because you know why, I don't discuss my messages with her. Most of the time, I put her in a spot in the message. All right? What is the correct insight about Jesus Christ? Pure soul? Okay. Uh, brother at the back? Son of God? Jewish? His forgiving? Uh, sister? You? Jubin's wife? Your savior? Uncle? Trustworthy? Come on, boy, yeah. I like the smile. He will come back one day, Jubin. The one who shows the real us. I need one more person. You, you, you. No. Okay, okay, I'll, I'll. Anyway, you, you said something. Savior, what about you? Forgive sin. So we all answered our question. But did you understand, what was your answer? You all answered what is comfortable for you to say. Right? How many of you would say that, he is a God who carries the worth for me? He is angry on me? Now, let me ask you, do you think that our Lord Jesus is angry upon you? I know most of you would say no. How many of you would say yes? I want to see the hands. Rest of the people, they think that God, Jesus is never angry on you. The truth is, he is. He is. Because most of the time, we take the grace as a, as a granted. That is why I just want to bring your attention to this topic this morning. Being a follower of Christ in this secular world, you have to understand, we are lacking in the correct insight about Lord Jesus Christ. You know, the grade, the eight graces that we are, we are talking about, this is only the third one that we just came. The correct insight says that you and I, we are making him sad every day, every moment, every second of The correct insight says that you and I, we are making him sad every day, every moment, every second of our life. You know why and how? The reason is, we go against to the commandments of the Lord. We go against to the commandments of the Lord. Now, I will be, I will be explaining on those things if God, God willing and if he allows the timing. The fourth grace is self-control. Self-control. That is what the word of God says, right? Verses five to six, right? Yes or no? There is a word, you know, it gives us the self-control. What do you mean by self-control? It's another grace that God has given upon the people of God when you grow in the knowledge of Christ. Self-control means self-discipline. You know, self-control means self-discipline. Now, self-discipline means what? Don't think that always God will come to you and give you the wisdom and prophesy on you. He is gonna do this, he is gonna do this, he is gonna do this. Let me tell, I know, is this going live? Okay, perfect. Alright, you know, most of the problem is, you know, God has given a gift of prophecy. I take it as a grant. I take it as a great blessing and honor it. Amen? I told you, God has given the gift of this prophecy and whenever God gives, I do prophesy. But I don't prefer to prophesy everywhere, wherever God is sending me. Because God hasn't sent me to prophesy to everybody and please the people of God. Let me tell you one thing, my dear church, the young people who are here. Whenever you are just receiving the prophecies of blessings, make sure that you kneel down in the presence of God and ask God whether this is right or not. Amen? Amen? I know most of you would love me if I'm going to say that, oh, from today onwards, God is going to turn your life and you will be a blessed one for the entire nation. Oh, my God, Pastor, thank you so much for that. But what if I'm gonna tell you, Jesus hates you this morning? Would you take that as a prophecy? If I'm telling you that Jesus does not like you anymore. He is tired of your life. He does not want to be with you. He told you many times. He yelled at you. He showed the many, 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 many signs that he will punish you. I know none of you would love it. But when you are growing in the knowledge of Christ, he will correct you. He will, the first thing, what, what does the word of God says? When you and I, we grow in Christ, it says that, what was the word? A knowledge with self-control and self-control with steadfastness and steadfastness with dartyness. When you are in this secular world, the first thing he wants you to learn is the knowledge of Christ. The knowledge of Christ means the right content or the correct insight. When you have the correct insight about the Lord Jesus, you will be self-disciplined. Am I right? How many of you agree to this? Come on, I just want some response. When you are having the correct insight about the Lord Jesus, let me tell you, you and I, we will have the self-discipline in our life. And that is why the word is very clear, the knowledge come with self-control. Amen? Don't you think that this is the grace of the Lord? Is it a grace of the Lord? Yes or no? Is it, is this the real grace of the Lord? Amen? Amen? Uh, let me just, uh. What is the first session time? What time it ends? I think you have sent me that. One o'clock, right? Okay. So, the first, okay. How many of you have installed TV or any, any gadget at home? How many of you have done that? All of you, right? Yes or no? So, first time, when you, when you, when you bought the TV for the first time, you have what? The TV? And what, what, what else comes in that packet? Manual, all the things, right? The very first time when you're fixing the TV on the wall, you know what you do? You open the packet and then you take the TV out, the first thing that you will be looking for is what? Is the manual. Right? The first thing, even before unwrapping the TV, what do you, what you will be looking? Manual. Why? To learn how to fix it. Alright? Now, a month later, you bought another TV. The same thing. The first thing that you will be taking out is what? The TV? Then what? The manual. Next month, you bought another TV. Alright? Same brand, same thing, everything is same. But this time, would you open the manual? Barely. Most of the time, we will not. Right? But I don't know how many of you have experienced this thing, but I did. Sometimes I try to be little bit oversmart and I mess up the whole thing. You know? Uh. You know, last month, when we were moving, when we moved into a new house, we were fixing the, uh, the bay, the, the garage. And as we were fixing the garage, one uncle was really helping me out and he is a man with a perfection. He wants everything to be on dole. And you know what? He told me, Pastor, you have to do this thing this way, this thing this way, this thing this way. You know, I don't, I didn't wanna trouble him either. And you know what? It was kind of a door fixing thing. He did everything right and he gave me an opportunity job to fix it. And you know what did I do? Messed it up. The reason, he gave me one more thing with that stuff. He said, Pastor, this is the manual, this is how you have to fix it. And you know what did I do? I, I heard whatever he said. I thought that I would be able to do it with what I heard. I did not paid attention to what? The manual. And you know what? Everything done. Next day, the same person came to the house. Everybody saw the door. Everybody in my house found the door. Everybody who came out, nobody found the mistake. But you know what? The person who assigned me that job, the first thing that you know what he said? You know, I was, I was not there at home. He told my wife, this thing is not supposed to be like this. For me, the door is closing. It is protecting, it is doing everything. But it was not. Perfect. Let me tell you, this is the overconfidence that we do have in Christian life too. We think that I have the knowledge about Christ, but we don't self-discipline ourselves. But the word of God says that when you are growing in Christ, in the knowledge of the Lord, the first thing that comes to your life is what? The self-discipline. Amen? What do you mean by self-discipline? Self-discipline means self-control. Amen? Okay. How many of you wanna go back to the word of God? Galatians, Galatians chapter five, verses, uh, you know, I just want to, I just wanna reverse the side, uh, the, the thought and you will understand why the self-control is so much important. Galatians chapter five, verses twenty-two. Uh, can somebody read that loud for me? What are the fruits of the spirit? Okay? The fruits of the spirit is love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness and faithfulness, gentleness and self-control. Against such things, there is no law. How many things are there? I think you should be knowing about it. How many fruits of the spirit? How many? Nine. All these fruits of the spirit, I believe most of you know it. Right? Okay, which is the first one? Come on, say it loud. What is the next one? Joy. What is the next one? 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 Self-control. You have love, joy, peace, patience, goodness, gentleness, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness and what? Okay, how many of you have love here? I'm not talking about your relationship. I'm asking, do you have the feeling of love? Do you have the emotion of love? How many of you have? Come on, raise your hands. How many of you have the emotion of love? Right? We all do have. Ethan, don't you have? Okay. Alright? How many of you have the emotion of joy? How many of you have the emotion of joy? Huh? Come on, raise, raise, raise. I just wanna, you know, this is a, this is a, this is a one-day camp, you know, we can, we can talk about it. Okay. How many of you have the peace? How many of you have the peace? Right? You might have, right? Okay. How many of you have the patience? You know? I should, I should, I should also put my hands down, right? See, my, my church kids, they, they are telling me, okay, this is how I am. Okay, how many of you have the patience? Yeah, my wife definitely have. And otherwise, she won't be able to tolerate me. Alright? Okay. How many of you have the kindness? Okay, praise God, at least things are coming back again. Alright. How many of you have goodness? You have goodness? Alright. How many of you have faithfulness? Faithfulness means everything. Come on. Okay. How many of you have gentleness? Pastor Angel, I appreciate that our church is really, you know, the first thing I love about it, they are saying the truth. You know? They are not the typical Malayali Pentecostal people. You know, Malayali Pentecostal people, sorry, you know, don't take in me an offending way. Amen? Now, the last and the final one. How many of you have self-control? I only see two hands. Can I see their wives here or do they have the wives here? So, my son, he is raising his hands. I don't know why. The person who does not have the self-control is him. If I tell him, no TV, he will figure out supplement where. Alright? Alright. Now, let me just ask you. It is not that practical to have love, joy, peace, patience and all the fruits of the spirit that God has given to us if we don't have what? Self-control. The base of this fruit of the spirit is what? Is self-control. The base. You know, you might not have seen talking about the self-control in any other scripture, but it has aligned with one thing. When you grow in the knowledge of Christ Jesus, it will come with self-control. Now, did you see the vice versa of this, the whole cycle? In Galatians chapter five, the self-control was the last one which was put in there. Right? But when the man of God is writing this particular letter for the church and the people of God to be a practical Christian believer in the end time, he made one thing very clear with the church. You should grow in the knowledge of Christ. When you have the knowledge of Christ, what will come as the base? Right? It is true that we do have the fruits of the spirit, which is nine of them, and the self-control is the least one or, or the last, sorry, last one. But when, when the man of God is writing the letter for the church and the people of God, he made sure when you are growing in the knowledge of Christ, the first thing that you will gain is what? Self-control. Amen? This morning, when I was driving the car, uh, van here, most of them, they correct me in driving these days. You know? Somebody was sitting next to me and he's like, you know, I was stopping at every, every, even, even at the yellow light, I was about to like stop. Usually, when it's yellow, I try to cross the thing. The thing is, I know that I have seventeen people with me in my vehicle. I can take the risk, but I cannot take the risk for other people. Because they have family, they have their loved one taking care of them, who wants to see them back home today. That made me well aware about one thing, that I have to control myself in everything today. Right? Why? Because I care for their parents. Now, my question is, when you grow in the knowledge of Christ, you are also caring about going back to the eternal life. If you are not growing in Christ, if you're not understanding the actual correctness of the Lord or the insight that the Lord that given to you, let me tell, we fail there and we fall back in sin. Am I right? Yes or no? So, that is why the word of God says the fourth grace of the Lord that he gives us and that is self-control. And what is the next one? Perseverance, right? That means bearing up under the trial. When you have the self-control in you, the word of God clearly says that you will be able to bear any kind of pain, any kind of things that you go through in your life. Amen? How many of you have gone through the trials? You know? Uh. Let me, I know this is a youth camp, so I will be discussing about certain things that you might be looking for, you might be seeking an answer in your life. How many of you believe in God's will? God's will? Let me tell. When you are here in the presence of God, when you grow in the knowledge of Christ, along with the knowledge of Christ, you will be developing what? The self-control. When you develop the self-control, it comes with a gift with it, you know, what is that? Perseverance, you will have the courage to go through the trials. Amen? I have my church kids here. You know, when I'm sharing this testimony with you all, I can share that with complete courage. For the last three years, more than three years now, been, been in Pika, there were so many trials, so many tribulations, so many questions, so many allegations, all things raised up. But one thing, I made sure in the presence of the Lord, Lord, if it is you who has sent me, I am not the one who is going to answer anything, it is you who is going to answer the questions. You know what made that clear? All glory and honor to God. I am still here by the grace of God. Amen? You know, last, last to last year, I haven't said this thing anywhere, I think, in public. I haven't said this thing in, anywhere in public. In twenty twenty-three, when I came back from India, I was held up in immigration department. The kids from my church, they came to pick me, pick me up from the airport, but I wasn't able to come out of the airport. I was, I was, uh, I was held in the immigration department. They made so many questions, which I never ever thought in my life. But you know what? All glory and honor to God, I had to go back to India. You know, that is why this year, my church has clearly told me, you cannot leave Philadelphia for the month of? Come on, you guys say. October and? November, I'm not allowed to go out of the, out of, out of the city. The reason, for the last two years, I had been stuck in different, different, different places. You know? But God's grace, where people thought I was deported from this country, God made me to come back to the same, same place, same city with the word of God, and I am here to preach the word of God. But my question, never take a shortcut. Never go for the easy way to be blessed. Never go for anybody to be pointing out on your faith. You should have that perseverance in your life, that you may be going through the trials, but bear, bear up with that, you will see an end result for it. Amen? I have a testimony to share this thing, this morning to you all. Last November, November seventh, I went to Canada to, you know, you know why I'm sharing the testimonies with it? Because you will be able to leave that life, if I can go through, go through it, then definitely you can go through it too. Last November, November sixth, I went from here to Canada for my visa process, to get the visa stamped on my passport. I literally went there with the two pairs of clothes, because my plan was to go there, get the visa stamped on my passport, come back on the next day, you know, I'll be joining with my church, everything was so planned, everything was all set up, and then just have to come back. You know, what happened? I went to Canada, I went to the embassy. When I gave my passport, you know, what did they say? We need to do the background check, until then, you cannot leave. Just imagine, I don't know anyone in Canada. I don't have anybody to contact in Canada. I went with my brother-in-law, we were in a hotel, we came back to the hotel, we called the lawyer, you know, whatever the people who helped us, you know, what did he say? Do you want to hear? He said, you made a blunder mistake by going to Canada. You should have gone to India. At least you have your family there, you could have been able to spend time there, till the time all this process is done. But you know what? I literally planned to go to India, but the Spirit of the Lord told me to go to Canada. That is why I went to Canada. I don't have anybody there. But you know what? God's grace, the only thing God told me, stay faithful. Be faithful. Came back to the hotel, start praying. I was like, God, I don't know what kind of trial you are taking me through. All glory and honor to God. That night, I was sitting in the hotel with my brother-in-law, I told him, I want to go and worship the Lord anywhere that God is taking me. One of my church believer, Ebbie, and his friend contacted me, we gone, we went to that person's, you know, he, he invited me to be a part of their worship, you know, evening meeting. I went there. When I reached there, he told me, pastor, this is not the church that I usually come, this is a meeting happening here, so I just invited you here. And it was a Malayali church. And you know, you know, what did I do? I said, okay, let's go back. I don't want to face anybody, because everybody will be asking so many questions to me. I don't have any answer. Even my wife called me, I did not pick up the call, because I don't have answer for anybody to give. People from my church are calling me, pastor, what, what happened? I don't have answer. When I heard from the lawyer, when I went through the Google, I came to know that it will take at least ninety-sixty to ninety working days to do all the entire background check. I'm not making a story, this is what happened in two, twenty twenty-four November. This is for the engragement for the young people. When you grow in the knowledge of Christ, when you go, when you go through the trials, when you, I guarantee you one thing, the Holy Spirit will give you the strength to go and bear with the trials, and you will see the end result for the kingdom of God. You know, what happened? Everything was working dead against to my plan. And all glory and honor to God, I went to that meeting, you know what happened there? The pastor who was there, he said, pastor, I want you to preach the word of God. Now you tell me, what will I preach? I don't have any answer. I'm standing in middle of a fire, I would say the furnace, the furnace of my life. And this pastor is like, but all glory and honor to God. I still remember, I sang one song. And that song is my favorite song. I said, I just sang this song. When I opened my eyes, I saw people there, there, they were starting crying. I stood up there for fifteen minutes, but I don't know how many hours that meeting has gone. The Spirit of the Lord started to moving in there. That night, I realized something. All this hindrance that has popped up, there is a plan for God. I stayed in that country for twenty-one days. But later on, I came to know, all glory and honor to God, in that twenty-one days, more than three hundred young people have accepted Lord Jesus as their personal Savior. Every doors were shut down. My passport, you know, after this meeting has happened, I've been, I've been invited in to preach many places. The, the government, the lawyer, the, the laws, everything said that it will take at least sixty to ninety days. But I got an email from the embassy, within three days, send my passport. Amen? I send my passport through Canada Post. I sent that thing on twelfth, I guess. On thirteenth, I came to know one thing, the Canada Post went on strike. Now, I don't have my passport with me. I don't have any documentation with me. What will I do, Lord? That, that particular strike went on for days and days. After two weeks, the church has planned for the Thanksgiving, my plan was to come before the Thanksgiving. I went to, I went to the embassy, at the final thing, I went to the embassy, I said, can I please get my passport back? You know, what did they say? The lady who was there, and there is a witness for this, this testimony, his name is Nelson and Javin, they came with me to the embassy. I went to the embassy, I asked, can I get my passport? The chief officer who was there, she said, get out of this place, we cannot give you the passport. Which is a law, they cannot. I went back to my car, I prayed in the car, I literally slept in the car for an hour. You know, there is Nelson and Javin, they are the witness for that. They don't know what is happening in our life. After I woke up from the sleep, in the sleep, the Holy Spirit spoke to me, go back to the officer and say sorry. I was like, why should I say sorry to that person? I did not do anything mistake. Go back to that officer and say sorry. I went back to the consulate, I went to that officer, she's like, are you here again? I said, yes, I am. But this time, I'm not here to ask for help, I'm here to say sorry if I messed up your, you know, day. She's like, are you a pastor? I said, yes. Pastor, I was, I was a believer, but for the last fourteen years, I never went back to the church. Would you please pray for me? This thing happened in Toronto, US Embassy consulate. She placed her hand on the glass, I placed my hand on the other side, I prayed for this woman. As I was walking back to the, my car, she came out of the consulate, she said, pastor, can you do me a favor? You, can you come on, that, that was, that was a Thanksgiving weekend, and you know that US offices are all closed on those, those weekends. She said, can you come back on Friday morning at nine thirty here? I said, you told me that the office is closed, you cannot do anything. She said, can you come back? Javin, Nelson, they all are looking at me. They were like, what happened here? I said, this is how God works in the middle of the trials. This is how God works in the middle of the trials. You know, what happened? When I, I went back, I gave a send-off, you know, I, 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 I told, I took all this young bunch of people with me, we had a dinner, and everything after the dinner, I said, next morning, I'm going. I said, no, this time I will go. I went to the consulate, everything was shut off. When I went there, this lady officer is still there. You know, she said, pastor, can you come with me? She hold my hand, she took me to the consulate without the appointment, without interview, without anything. She made me to sit in an office room, and with me, Javin and Nelson were also there. And she said, can you sit here? They had couple of people there. That's when I asked who that lady is. That is when the other officers, they said, she is the chief security officer for Toronto consulate. And I was like, did I mess with her? Did I say all these things to her? You know, what happened? She came back with my passport, and first thing, Pastor Rufus, congratulations, your visa is approved. And I was like so excited, I just took my passport, I was like, goodbye. You know? All of a sudden, this woman, she said, you know, why did I bring you back into this consulate? I want you to lay your hands on every officer here and pray for their officers here. God has given the privilege to pray for the consulate officers in United, in, 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 in Canada, in Toronto. Hallelujah, bearing up with the trials, that is the next grace of the Lord. Amen? And what does the knowledge of God brings you in this, in the secular world? That is godliness, a godly character out of devotion of God. Amen? What is godliness? What is godliness? Most of the people think that godliness means speaking in tongue. Right? Most of the people think that I am a child of God, then it is a godliness. No! Godliness means you have a godly character. How many of us have the godly character? That is the question. And most of you said, you all know the insight about, about the Lord Jesus Christ. Many of you said, Lord forgives me, he loves me, he takes care of me, he is this, he is that. Until unless you don't have the godly character in us, do you think that we would be able to reflect the love and kindness to the Lord? And when we have the godly character in us, we have a brotherly kindness, that is what the next verse says, uh, Second Peter, chapter five, one verses seven says that you will have what? Brotherly kindness. Amen? That is the last, now, the last one is says, the love is an active goodwill towards others. Now, when we go through all these things, we must learn about verses eight. It says that now, carefully, verses eight, it says, for if these qualities are yours and increasing, they keep you from being ineffective or unfruitful in the knowledge of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen? Amen? When you have these qualities from the Lord, for by what we saw and heard, that righteous man, while living among them, felt his righteous soul tormented days after day, their lawless deeds. If you don't carry the knowledge of God, we will be failing. Amen? Amen? So, as I told you, let me ask one question. How many of you have the phones? You know? Okay. Nathan, this is the question that I have to, Nathan Phillips. Alright, who is the president of America? Huh? Alright, which is your favorite game? Huh? Okay. What's your, what's your, what's your favorite dress code? What do you, what do you love to wear? Yeah. You don't have time to think that much. Huh? Okay. Where you love to go the most? Two places, alright. What are you, what are you doing on the phone right now? His answer might be Instagram. You know? See, this is how, you know, I have freedom with these kids, that's why I'm just picking them up. You know, this is how God will be testing us. Most of the people thinks that God will just come to you and just talk to you about the problem that you go through. He will pick out where you're gone wrong in middle of the many other questions. Right? You know, one day, what happened? When I was like talking to some young people, they were like, you know, I'm, I was preaching the word of God, all of a sudden, they were like doing, you know, their Instagram, all the rest of the things. I just went to that person, I was like, hey, what do you like the most? Blah, blah, blah. At the end, I just, what were you doing on the phone? Pastor, I was watching this reel. Don't you think what we are trying to do in the secular world? You know? Let me tell about my testimony in like two to three minutes. Basically, I was not a pastor. I was a software engineer, did my mass, did, did my engineering from Delhi. And when I did my engineering, by the grace of the Lord, I cleared my engineering with a third rank in the university. I was graduated from Delhi, I was placed in Vipro as executive developer. I always says that, one time, somebody asked me, what was the salary? I would say, I used to earn one seventy-five dollar per hour for my work. But do you know why I am here with this word of God this morning? This is much more worth than one seventy-five dollar per hour. If you are trying to follow the secular world this morning, let me tell you, you are losing one of the most important thing, and that is the knowledge of Christ. Amen? Let me ask you one thing. How many of you want to come out and understand, God, I am here to understand the presence of the Lord? How many of you would say with me that? How many of you need the grace of the Lord this morning? How many of you would say that, God, I want to avoid the world that I'm living in? Amen? How many of you would love to avoid the world? Nobody, right? No one, right? No one, right? But if you want to be a child of God, you have to avoid certain things. Pastor Jubin Bhai, this is the main problem with the Christianity these days. We try to bring everything together and everything together and then we try to please God. In my church, when the choir gets ready, I tell them, I don't want anybody on the stage to perform. If anybody is performing here, you are out of the stage next day. If I don't see them praying before the meet, before the choir, you are not allowed. If they are not practicing for the kingdom of God, you are not allowed. Amen? This is not a place where you can do whatever we want to do. Amen? How many of you would say that, God, I need that presence of the Lord with me? Amen? Now, I will be, I will be focusing, you know, I will be going into the cushion, cushion area right now. But before that, I just want to ask you about one more thing that we need to understand the word. The definition of self-control. What is the definition of self-control? The Greek word is ekratia, that means cratos, meaning the strength. What is your strength? Most of you people say that I have this strength, I have that strength. How many of you have the self-control as your strength? None? Wow. The word of God speaks, the best strength a child of God could have is what? Is the self-control, it's nothing else. That is why the word of God says, as defined by various scholars, hold, one holding himself in. That is what the scholar Robertson says about self-control, one holding himself in. You know, I know, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty guaranteed about people like many, 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 many times. My wife is here. I always says that I used to have like, my, 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 my temperament is very high. You know, but these days, when I get tempered, you know what I do? Huh? Can you take a wild guess? There is no point in breathing. Huh? And even that didn't work for me. I, no, I, I, I did try. Then I was like more tempered. I tried to do certain things, never worked. You know what I do? I just go to my room, just sleep. You know, whenever I get tempered, I don't talk much because I know if I talk, that's gonna be the final talk. You know? You know, as a family, we have agreements, disagreements. You know what my wife hates the most? Now she's slowly understanding that when he is quiet, that means he is not in the right mood. She, she used to hate this thing, Acha Acha used to speak something. You know how she is? When she is like angry, she talks too much. And when I am angry, I don't talk. So it's a perfect match, right? If we both talk, it would have ended up in what? See, that is how God, you know, my strength is when I am tempered, when, when my temperament is high. You know, I don't try to speak, you know? Him. You know why? He's our sound guy. Every Sunday, every moment. You know, when I was not here in the church for like three weeks, you know, when I came back, I was like, it's ten o'clock. Why you guys are not like, the system is not on and all those things? You know what he said? Oh, I was missing that you were yelling at me. He waited for me to yell at him. You know? But sometimes I don't have to yell, I just have to give a look. You know, how did I control? My strength is my temperament these days. You know why? That makes me to learn who I am at that moment. If you are failing in your life, if you are saying that the virtue of one who masters his desire and passion, yes, especially his sensual appetite, that is your strength. Amen? That is why the word of God says, the demand for self-control, Daniel of self-necessary, that is what we can see. Luke chapter nine, verses twenty-three, he said, Daniel of self-necessary to follow Jesus. Daniel made himself understand and make sure that he will follow Jesus. Amen? Titus, chapter one, Titus, chapter two, verses eleven and twelve, it says, it is an important element of what God's grace teaches us. If you are here this morning to understand God, why I am here? Understand that he wants to teach you about something and that is self-control. And that is the greatest grace of the Lord Jesus Christ can give to anyone. Amen? I will be opening the session for you to put up the, how, how, how you're gonna answer it. They can stand up and answer question or you want to write? You can write in a page, any questions that you want to get clear this morning. God, you know, how will I be able to entangle my life in the secular world? Let me just tell you one thing. If a small device that is in your hand this morning can understand about who you are and what you would love to see on your phone, then just imagine God would know you more better. Amen? God knows you even better. That is why the word of God clearly tells us in the presence of the Lord. You know, how would you have a solution for this, this particular thing? Romans chapter six, verses three to six, it says, in baptism, our body of sin is put to death as we buried into the death of Christ. How you want to be, get back onto this secular world? The best thing that you can have on the secular world is self-control. Amen? In the Arkhangal, in Deshi, Arkhangal self-control illegal. And we are going to parayam. Ninga da phone la, I'm, I'm going to conclude here. How many of you have Instagram? I told this thing in the, in our church. How many of you have Instagram? How many of you have YouTube? How many of you have put the timer on that? Like I will watch fifteen minutes a day or ten minutes a day or one hour a day? None of you? None of us, right? Is there any people who have tried that? You did, right? How did, how did this end up? No, that is the truth. This is what we do. You know how much we are into secular field, secular world? We dismiss our control for that thing. Are you understanding what I'm, where I'm going through? How many of you spend reading the scripture? That we don't dismiss, right? We, and right after, how many of you read Bible every day? How many of you read Bible every day? How many of you read more than ten verses every day? More than ten verses? Oh my goodness. Barely I can see one, two, three or four hands. How many of you read one chapter every day? One chapter. I know Noel reads because that is his daily thing. One chapter. But have you ever skipped on that? But have you ever skipped watching YouTube? Have you ever skipped scrolling down your Instagram page? Have you ever missed scrolling down your TikTok page? It is not the world is ruling you, it is you who are addicted to the world. Doesn't matter what age you are. Amen? And the mother, I told him to put the seatbelt. He did not put the seatbelt. He fell from the seat. Next day, when we were driving, I got into the car, I said, Noel, it's better you wear the seatbelt. He did not wear it. You know what he said? First you wear it, then I will do it. You know, I started to do something so that he can follow me. If you want your child to follow you, start doing it in the presence of the Lord. Let's close our eyes. There is no shortcuts to discipline our children. There is only one way to discipline our children, discipline ourself. Doesn't matter what age you are, doesn't matter what kind of background you have, you have. Doesn't matter how many years you've been in the spiritual world. Doesn't matter how many years you are in this presence, but you have been praying for the grace of the Lord. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful time. I pray, Lord, help us to control our emotions, control ourself. Help us to grow in the knowledge of the Lord Jesus Christ as we are here in the morning. Lord, we need you, we need your grace, in the name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen, amen, amen. If you have any questions.